I'd like to call the Tuesday, May 20, 2014 Papillion City Council Meeting in order. Ms. McCarthy, would you please take the roll?
Florence, Mumgaard, Gaines, Glover, Jaworski, Klug, Stube, Ingberg.
We're going to do the Pledge of Allegiance, but after that, we're going to do a moment of silence. If you're not aware, Rob McCuster, who was a city employee in the Water Department since 2006, I believe, passed away just a couple of days ago, and so we want to remember him and his contribution to the city. Join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible) to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And if you are available, there is going to be a reception in his honor tomorrow night from 6 to 8 at Holy Kalinsky Funeral Home in Council Bluffs. Do we have an affidavit, a publication on file?
That is correct.
And a current copy of the Open Meeting Act is posted in the City Council chambers? We do have one presentation tonight, Sarpy County EDC. President is joining us, which I think that's probably your first time coming to us, isn't it?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Do you want to go ahead and just introduce yourself, because I don't know if everybody knows you or not?
I'm Dan Teal. I'm the president of Sarpy County Economic Development Corporation, and I'm glad to be here this evening. Mayor Black and council members, I'll run through this presentation briefly. I did pass out some of the statistics that Toby Churchill, our executive director, prepared. The census numbers, 2012 census, July 2012 was the most current numbers we have. Sarpy County continues to grow, up about 3,000 over 2011, and up about 7,000 since 2010. Sarpy County is the 94th fastest-growing county in the U.S., growing by, well, as I said, about 7,000 since 2000. All of the cities in Sarpy County are growing. We only have city data through 2011, but all the cities are up. Papillion is up 6 percent 2010 to 2011. We should have 2012 data fairly soon. Median household income, Papillion has the highest median household income in Sarpy County and the second highest per capita, third highest per capita income, no, I was right, second highest per capita income that's in the state of Nebraska. Net taxable sales, taxable sales are always one quarter behind, so we've got the fourth quarter of 2013 here. 2013 was a great year, up $51 million over 2012. All of the different areas of Sarpy County were up. Gretna was up the most. You see, obviously, a big bump there from the Outland Mall opening during the fourth quarter. But in Papillion, taxable sales up $13 million in the fourth quarter alone. This is the year-by-year plot of net taxable sales. 2013 was a record at $1.44 billion in net taxable sales. That's up some $124 million over 2012, and obviously, obviously, a record. Assess valuation continued to grow in Sarpy County and has continued to, has grown continuously each year. We didn't have any dip during the recession. Taxable valuations up $148 million, 2013 over 2012. The 12-year average increase, the average annual increase over 12 years, $492 million a year. Pretty impressive growth from $5.6 billion to $11.6 billion over 12 years. Building permit valuations, this is the first quarter of 2014. Building permits were up $93 million, 2014, over 2013 in the first quarter. We had a nice bump from a $70 million project, that's the Travelers Project, but even outside of that, we're up another $23 million in building permit valuations for the first quarter. That is a record for the first quarter. 2014 was a record for the first quarter of the year. The total building permits in Sarpy County, $193 million in the first quarter of 2014. Here's the year-by-year. Obviously, these follow the economy. We had some down years, but 2013, $514 billion in, $514 million in building permits during 2013. That's, that equals, roughly equal 2007, and is not too far off the 2008 record, and obviously, a huge, huge recovery from the last several years. Some of the major valuation projects, and you're familiar with some of these, the Travelers Project, it's $75 million permitted in the first quarter. Sergeant Pet Products, that's in, just south of Giles Road, in the Sarpy County Industrial Park, $7.2 million. It's a nice project, and several others. I won't read those all to you. But here are some of those projects. There's the Fairfield Inn. This is the Fidelity Project, Project Photon, well underway now. The Grand Lodge Project, obviously, a nice project. I think the roof's completely on that now. Sam's Club, you're certainly familiar with that. That's right here. Sergeant Pet Care Products, this is a warehouse distribution center right on the south side of Giles Road in the Sarpy County Industrial Park, right east of the Claus plant. That's a two, it's almost a 300,000 square foot building, I believe. Very, very nice project there. And this is the Travelers Project. They're well underway with that, with that data center project. That's a great addition to Sarpy County. Back to the permits. The single-family permits were down in the first quarter. Given the weather, I don't think that probably surprises anybody, but down 42 permits over 2013 in the first quarter. You can see the city-by-city breakdown. The number of permits issued, housing, single-family permits issued year-by-year, 2013 was 1,022 permits. That's obviously way down from the records, and that's slightly below the long-term trend. But I think that's a sustainable number. I think the, the record numbers back there are, were obviously not sustainable. This is an interesting slide, I thought. Between 2000 and 2013, so over, over 13 years, there were 16,400 single-family permits issued. During that time, there were 14,066 single-family lots planted. So we reduced our lot inventory by 2,000, almost 2,400 lots in Sarpy County, and I think that's borne out, and you see the projects going on Highway 370 and elsewhere. Multifamily housing permits, these are very volatile numbers. These are just a few projects here and there, so we're down 2014 over 2013, but we expect the strength in the multifamily market to, or the trends to continue. This is the year-by-year numbers, way off of our record, which was 2,000, but again, these are, you know, just a few projects, and the numbers can be distorted very much. 407 permits or units in 2013, that's right in line with long-term trends, and I, and I think is, is a healthy number. The labor force, the good news is the labor force continues to grow in Sarpy County, somewhat slow, but labor force continues to grow. Employment also continues to grow. We did have a slight uptick in the unemployment rate in the first, well, through the first quarter of 2014, in February specifically. These are not seasonally adjusted numbers. These are raw, raw numbers, and nothing to be alarmed at there. Prospects, people calling us, looking to expand, looking to relocate. The numbers are a little bit soft for the first quarter. We only had seven prospects. Four of those were manufacturing prospects, though, and they were good, solid prospects. And as we look at some of the other numbers, I think you'll make the case that these are more solid leads than we've had in the past. In the first quarter, we've had, as I said, four manufacturing opportunities present, present themselves to us that we're pursuing, as well as one data center and various other facilities. Here's the inquiry, inquiries year-over-year. In the early years on this slide, this was anybody who rang our phone and said, "Hey, can you send me some data?" And the later years in these slides, these are only people that we felt we were fit for, and we made a detailed presentation. So although, although the numbers are down, the quality of these prospects is much higher, and in fact, the quality of the prospects we, we entertained continue to grow. Over 2013, these are some of the numbers on, some information on the people who, the prospects we did court, projects ranging from 25 to 300 employees, investments from $250,000 to $200 million, large range of building sizes and building sites. Our largest shovel-ready site was the 49-acre parcel in the Sarpy County Industrial Park that Sargent's bought, so our largest shovel-ready site is off the market, so we are looking for land to develop. Call centers and service centers, these, we had a wide range of contacts through 2013. The South Roads Technology Building and the Lockheed Martin Building that's now vacant or becoming vacant are two of the most submitted buildings for, for those, for the call center projects, anyway. And that's the end of my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions on, on our activities. Again, I'd like to thank the City of Papillion for their continued support of Sarpy County Economic Development and our activities.
Mr. Mumgaard.
I have a question, and it's about multifamily housing permits. Could you get back to that slide? I'll tell you, we've had discussions about apartments and whether there's an ideal ratio between apartments and housing, and single-family housing, and some of that discussion has involved vacancy rates. Do any of these numbers tell us anything about trends or ideal numbers of apartments in any area? Let me, let me move offside. Do these, when you compile these numbers, is that by city limits or zoning jurisdiction? What is the?
Who issues the permit? So it would include your extraterritorial zone.
It wouldn't give anything about vacancies, though.
Yeah.
Well, I thought I wondered, do you, do you pull out any information that would help us to identify whether we do or don't need more apartments?
You know, it's a good question. No, we don't have any information on vacancies, and, and I don't think we necessarily, we necessarily take a position on what the proper ratio of single-family to multifamily is. We entrust that to the, to the zoning and planning officials of the individual communities to make their best judgments. The vacancy information would, would be interesting. I don't have any information on that. We don't have it in information we track, but that, that would be interesting, I think, to.
Where do you, does anybody compile that kind of information?
You'd think that somebody does.
Councilman Jaworski.
Yeah, that's what I, well, let me rephrase that. Does anybody credible compile that information? Councilman Jaworski, okay.
That was my answer. Thank you.
Well, okay, the next slide where you had the, the graph, you said something about a trend.
Well, I was saying we're, we're within the, the long-term range. I mean, we've gone from a low of 92 to a high of 962, but most of the numbers have been between 250 and 450, so we're, we're kind of right within that, you know, the average over time.
We were being told, I think, by a developer that, okay, housing prices are, it's becoming more difficult to buy a house in the lower-cost level, and that pushes pressure on apartments, and so we needed more apartments. And you see, I see numbers of houses, housing permits going up, which seems contrary to what that developer was telling us. Now, maybe I got it wrong entirely.
That is the prevailing, what the developer's telling you is the prevailing thought, and it's harder to get a loan. I mean, everything is. I think you will see a fairly strong apartment construction market over the next year. I wouldn't guess what the long-term trend is, but I think you'll see a fairly strong market, at least over the next year.
And then I look at the numbers here, and I'm seeing zeros in the other cities, and I'm wondering, well, what, what's going on there? That they're getting zeros, and for example, in 13, we had 110 units, and they, everybody else had zero, you know?
And that's probably one project.
Yeah.
And so that's, that's how the numbers are so distorted. You know, you get one project, and it's got 300 units, and you have a great num, great quarter, and it's, but it's the only project the whole year.
Well, we're, that, I'm sure that debate's going to continue here about what is the ideal ratio between, and I know what you think, Mr. Jaworski, what is the ideal ratio there? And so if you have any information that you could provide us, I think I would at least be interested in it. Thanks.
I'll, I'll see what we can come up with.
We, we did a survey of what it is in other places, La Vista and other surrounding communities, but I don't know what that tells me, so if, if you have some expertise there, that would be helpful. Thank you.
Do we have any other questions? Appreciate you coming out. Appreciate the partnership, too. We did just send our investment chat back in. Thank you.
And again, I do appreciate that. Thank you.
Mr. Hoynes, Administrator's Report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I begin my report this evening by reminding council that budget planning for the next year is in full swing at the staff level. We've near-finalizing all of the revenue projections for next year, working on the expense side of things over the next 30 days or so. Just to give you a very high-level timeframe, the budget is scheduled to be introduced to the public at the August 5 city council meeting, so really between now and mid-July, if you have substantial input on the budget, I, we've tried to accommodate the requests that we're aware of to the extent that we can in that proposal, but you'll, public hearings generally held mid-August, and it has to be finalized to the state of Nebraska by September 20, so if you, if you have really burning budget questions or things you want to make sure that are included or considered for the collective group, now is the time to, to do that. The earlier, the better. We can make, make, make it fit or try to. Second item this evening, you're all aware of the, within the last year or so, the formation of the Historical Downtown Business Association. I spent some time this afternoon talking to Kim down at Kajomas, and they're going to, the Business Association's going to be finalizing some plans beginning in June, where the downtown businesses stay open until 8:00 PM on Tuesday evenings. They're bringing in some entertainment, and they're even talking about another day of staying open late in the evening, and they're really doing some exciting things in there. So both as a council member, you're aware of that, but as a citizen, if you're kind of mentally marked Tuesday nights through this summer, I think you're going to see a lot of buzz in Papillion downtown that you've, you've not traditionally seen. That's a, that's a, the cool thing is they're doing it themselves. I mean, I stopped in to talk to Anne, or to Kim, and she was advising me how that was going to go. Couple of date issues, events, Memorial Day event, Papillion, first time the city's working with the U.S. Army. We're having a, an induction ceremony in Veterans Park, and I think it is, it may be, at 1:30 PM, it's, enlistees from the area are actually going to be inducted into the Army at 1:30 in our new Veterans Park that afternoon, and then there's a, a small reception. So you might want to put that on your calendar. Promotional ceremony for the fire department, they don't have those every time somebody's promoted, and I think over the, with the recent expansion, I think we have eight or nine promotions that's taken place the last 18 to 24 months or so. That's at the, how do I politically correctly say this? It's at the Papillion Fire Station 1 in La Vista at 108th and Chandler Roads. That's a Tuesday evening. I think there were some invitations I saw sitting at, at your table, and so you're certainly invited to that. And it, you know, and that, where does time really go, things? Lori was reminding us this morning at staff meeting that this summer is Pappy O'Bay's 20th birthday. 1994, it opened in June of 94. Some of you sitting around this table, your name's actually on the cornerstone there, and Lori's staff is working on putting a, a 20th birthday party for Pappy O'Bay and invite some of the elected officials and staff that were involved in the planning of that to come back and have a special recognition for that. So that, is that the 21st, Lori? June 21st? And we'll get more detailed information out to, to you folks as we do that. That concludes my report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Jaworski.
Second.
Second by Councilman Stube. Do we have any proponents? Do we have any opponents? Council discussion? And a number of the applicants on items are here, if you've got any questions for them. No council discussion? Please vote.
A.A.'s, zero nays.
Motion passes. Thank you. Next is item D1. Ordinance 1692, an ordinance to approve the change of zone of certain real property within the zoning jurisdiction of the city of Papillion. Sarpy County, Nebraska, legally described as part of Tax Lot 8 in the south half of the southeast quarter, together with that part of Tax Lot 1 in the south half of the southwest quarter, all in Section 19 Township 14 North, Range 12 East of the 6:00 PM Sarpy County, Nebraska, generally located on the northeast corner of 126 Street and Lincoln Road, from agricultural AG to multiple-family residential R4, to amend the official zoning map of the city of Papillion by changing the zoning district boundaries of the zoning map in accordance with Section 20532 of the Papillion Municipal Code and to provide for an effective date. Is there a council member that will introduce?
I'll.
Introduced by Councilman Stube. Thank you. Item D2, Ordinance 1693, an ordinance to approve the change of zone of certain real property within the zoning jurisdiction of the city of Papillion, Sarpy County, Nebraska, legally described as Tax Lot B in the west half of the southeast quarter of Section 35 Township 14 North, Range 12 East of the 6:00 PM. Sarpy County generally located at 78th Street and Highway 370, from agricultural AG to mixed use MU, to amend the official zoning map of the city of Papillion by changing the zoning district boundaries of the zoning map in accordance with Section 20532 of the Papillion Municipal Code and to provide for an effective date. Is there a council member that will introduce?
I'll.
Introduced by Councilman Ingberg. Thank you. Next is item F1. Resolution R140073, a resolution to accept a conveyance of property for the Public Works Site from the Municipal Facilities Corporation pursuant to a lease-purchase agreement. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R140073?
I'll.
Motion by Councilman Klug.
I'll.
Second by Councilman Stube. Do we have any proponents? Any opponents? Council discussion? Please vote.
A.A.'s, zero nays.
Motion passes. F2, Resolution R140074, a resolution to approve the termination and release of easement for the termination of a permanent access easement, as recorded on April 22, 2011 with Sarpy County Register of Deeds, as instrument number 2011-10424. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R140074? Motion by Councilman Jaworski. Second by Councilman Glover. This item does need to be amended. You should have an updated legal description at your table, so do we have a motion to amend Resolution R140074 to revise the legal description that's listed as Exhibit A?
I'll.
Motion to amend? Do we have a second? Second by Councilman Gaines. Do we have proponents on the motion to amend? Any opponents? Council discussion on the motion to amend? Please vote on the motion to amend.
A.A.'s, zero nays.
Motion is amended. Do we have proponents on the amended motion? Any opponents? Council discussion? Please vote on the original motion as amended.
A.A.'s, zero nays.
Next item, I would like to defer to closed session, and then we will come out after closed session and work on that item. Is there a motion to go into closed session to protect the public interest to discuss land negotiations pertaining to parks?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Florence.
Second.
Second by Councilman Gaines. Proponents? Any opponents? Council discussion. Mr. Mumgaard.
Could I make a substitute motion to go to comments from the floor before we go to the closed session?
Yes. If nobody objects, we'll just do that. I see no objections, so we will just go to that. Go ahead and, no committees have met, so we don't have any committee reports. Any comments from the floor? Anybody want to make any comments? Any council comments? As long as they're, I'll go ahead and give the updates from the last couple of weeks in case anybody leaves. We did have several ribbon cuttings. The number of us, and I appreciate the turnout, attended the ribbon cutting for the SAC Federal Credit Union Headquarters. Nice to have a Class A office building in a very prominent spot. Also attended the suburban Rotary Luncheon. There was several students that were being recognized from Papillion, La Vista South. Mr. Hoynes and I met with Randy Thielin, who is the new director of the Economic Development Corporation for the metro area, and talked about our partnership there. Mr. Hoynes and I also met with Greg Yule from MAPPA in regards to some of the things they're doing and how we can take advantage of that, or they can take Papillion into account a little bit more. A number of us met with the design team from the Public Works Facility just for a regular monthly update, and got an update on the project schedule there, and I think everything's on track, and sometime in June, we should start seeing dirt moved on-site there. Also, PD's got their graduation season. Trumbull Park had their, their graduation, and May 22, Terra Heights has theirs, if anybody's interested. And if you want the full schedule, just reach out to Chief Alouz, and he can get that for you. We've also had two more ribbon cuttings in the downtown area. One is by the Garden Gate, which is Kathy Bolkman's Zeeb House right across from City Hall, and then another house up the street, Hedgero Herbals. What's nice about both of their stories, both of them were people that were driving downtown, saw what's going on downtown, saw those houses, and said, "We need to move our business in there," and they both had ribbon cuttings on the same day. One of those people just moved from Virginia in October, and driving in downtown Papillion and leased a house and moved a business in there. So be sure to pop in and support those, and then New Don, New Trishen had theirs as well. They're expanding, there was a second site. The ALS Awareness Month for ALS of the Heartland met in Papillion, and so went out and presented a proclamation to them. Class B state baseball tournament was at Warner, so Mayor Kindig and myself threw out the first pitch there. If you remember, last year, we won the four, rights to four years for the, for the state baseball, and we'll alternate Class A and Class B, so that was nice to have that there. And then Lori, great event this weekend with the half marathon, the 10K and the 5K run. I think there were 120 volunteers in addition to the city staff. There were about 900 participants from about 14 different states and 44 cities across Nebraska. So that, those people are coming in, some are staying in the hotels, they're shopping at the restaurants, so that's a serious event, so thank you for everything you're doing And Councilman Stube finished his first half marathon.
Yeah.
Just a couple of other items, too. Pinpoint Communications is a divisional headquarters for a regional telecommunications company. They chose to relocate to Papillion, and they're having an open house this Thursday from 3 to 6, so if you're available, they're in the top floor of, of the American National Building on 84th and 370, so this Tuesday, 3 to 6. Again, the reminder in Tuesdays in June of the Concert Series Downtown, and also on June 3 at 10:00 AM, the Carpenters Union is going to have a groundbreaking for their facility, and again, that's a regional training facility, so people come into Papillion and then hopefully staying in the Papillion Hotel. Then the last reminder, this Monday, 1:30 again, is the Memorial Day Event, and that's a partnership between the city of Papillion and the Army, and those are future soldiers that are being signed in, and will have an official ceremony, and it is at Veterans Park, so that was a nice thing. Mr. Stube.
Yeah, I, I did want to make a comment with regard to the race this weekend, and I do want to echo the same sentiments with regard to city staff and volunteers that were out there. It's the first time that I ran that race, and it was unbelievable from the standpoint of the instructions that were given out, the directions, the signage. I saw a number of city staff standing on the corner and, and directing, you know, the, the event, and I very, very much thought it was a very well-run event. I do have one recommendation for next year's race, and is that if Marty could maybe shave off that hill on the last mile in, that I think would be beneficial, and I think even Chief Bose would agree with that one, so thank you again.
You know, I think that's one of the reasons for the serious racers, they do travel here. We see how many come from outside the state and from around Nebraska, and I think part of it is because it is such a technical course. It's getting a reputation that if you're a serious runner, this is one to come and train at, so thank you. Do we, is there a motion to go into closed session to protect the public interest to discuss land negotiations pertaining to parks? Motion by Councilman Glover? Second by Councilman Klug. Proponents? Any opponents? Council discussion? Please vote. Ms. Klug? There you go.
A.A.'s, zero nays.
I'll state for the record, the purpose for the closed session is only to discuss land negotiations pertaining to parks. Closed session will include the mayor, the city council, city administrator, assistant city administrator, the parks director, finance director, the staff attorney, and the city clerk. We'll be right back. Councilwoman Clug, Councilman Ingberg, Councilman Mungard, and Councilman Florence. Councilman Florence.
A.A., zero nays.
Motion passes. Item F3, Resolution R140086, a resolution to approve a real estate purchase agreement for the property described as tax lots 11A, Section 26, Range 14, no, 261412, and it's 1.92 acres, Sarpy County, Nebraska, generally located at 305 and 307 East Lincoln Street for a parks maintenance facility. A motion to approve Resolution R140086. Motion by Councilwoman Clug. Second by Councilman Florence. Any proponents? Any opponents? Council discussion? The agent is here, if you've got any questions, please vote.
A.A., zero nays.
Motion passes. Mr. Lize, thank you very much. I think we are done. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Ingberg? Second by Councilwoman Clug. Mr. Mungard.
A.A., zero nays.
We are adjourned.